Some comments that didn't happen, you know. So it should be on there.
You never know when you might get a call. Easy ringer sound for someone to use set up long time ago.
Hey, good evening. As it is five thirty, I'll call the planning commission meeting of March the nineteenth to order. Chris, can we get a roll call?
Absolutely. Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Frucker.
Here.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Ms. Proper.
Yeah.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
And Ms. Gort.
Planning Commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes from last meeting? Everybody's good? Okay. Then the minutes will stand approved as they are recorded. Changes to the agenda staff?
There are no changes.
Part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. If you are attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
Nobody's on.
Okay. All right. And I think that we only have, we don't have anything on the consent calendar, so we're move right into town project. Steph?
All right. Let me just get the PDF to the right location. Sorry. I'm in view mode and I can't type. Okay. All right. So tonight before you for a town project hearing is a temporary delivery structure to be located at the Tiger Dredge parking lot on the southern horseshoe there. This will facilitate the town council directed project to have a food and beverage delivery service that moves larger delivery trucks off of the smaller and narrower streets and alleyways in town, gets them to a centralized location instead, and then disperses food and beverage deliveries for the last mile using all electric delivery carts. So to facilitate this project, the town council, Public Works, and the selected contractor work together to pre-select the site that they have chosen, which is again that one fifty West Adams Avenue, which is the Riverwalk Center parcel. It's the south horseshoe portion of the Tiger Dredge parking lot. So I will kind of go through each of the most important pieces of the development code that staff wants to touch on and any, any policies which received negative or positive points. And then I'll give a summary kind of at the end of those points.
Sarah, before you do that, before we lose this slide, can you tell us what we're looking at there in this plan?
Sure. So the blue outline here at the bottom will be the delivery structure itself. And then there will be a temporary office connected to that sprung structure on the back. There will be six loading docks on the front where tractor trailers couldn't back into that location and unload goods and services. The red outline is just the truck movements that those will make through the parking lot. So they'll come in from West Adams Avenue, make a right, and then back into the delivery loading docks. So the, the blue outline is the structure itself. These on the left-hand side of the screen, those are going to be the, they're raised docks so that I, I think they have conveyors on them. So it's like the deliveries kind of move across those. So they may protrude a little bit from the structure as shown here.
So in this depiction, we'll lose the entire center island there?
Yes, and I will discuss that when I talk about landscaping.
Okay.
Okay. Question about that. On the two left, is that for the electric vehicles for loading them? And the ones on the right are for the bigger trucks or?
I think so.
How's goods gonna flow through there?
We, we do have the town engineer here and she can answer those types of questions.
Okay, great.
Hi, Shannon Cahill Smith for the record, town engineer. These six locations are all for the delivery vehicles. Each size of delivery vehicle will have a specialized spot in the dock. And it's a cross dock situation where the delivery vehicles are on one side and then the electric carts are on the opposite. So the goods are passed across the dock. Does that answer the question?
So how do the electric vehicles that are transporting it to, I guess the businesses, they come out, out of that building?
They would sort of come out of the side. This is very schematic as depicted. So they would come out of the building as well.
You don't have to add any asphalt.
Um, no, we'll be contained within the curbing gutter limits on here. We will need to totally remove all that, scrape it, regrade it, and then repave it is the plan. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Since it is a town project hearing to allow staff to make their presentation, ask questions of staff once that's completed. And then also Shannon really representing the town as the applicant also can either make a brief presentation for anything that Sarah missed or answer questions as well. And I think some of it may be answered during, in the context of the presentation.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. So the first policy we looked at that staff wanted to consider was density and intensity on the site. This will be two thousand three hundred approximate square feet of new density, even though it's a temporary structure. So we considered that. The new total SFEs on the site will be nineteen point one, one SFEs and a floor area ratio of one to fifteen. So that's far less than the allowed one to three for commercial development in this land use district. So we didn't have any concerns about the temporary additional density, but did consider that. Most importantly, planning looked at the architectural compatibility standard, policy five. So I'll go back to our elevations here. This structure will be an aluminum sprung structure with stretched canvas. It'll have a steel foundation underneath. And then the rear will be that temporary office building as well, most likely with aluminum painted siding. I think white, the canvas structure will be brown. We did not have a policy guideline for canvas in our policy five, but because it's a non-natural material and it does not match architecturally with anything else in the district, staff assigned the maximum negative points to the structure regarding architectural compatibility. So that's negative six under policy five. And then we also looked at the building height. This land use district allows for a two-story maximum or twenty-six feet. This temporary structure will be twenty-one feet and ten inches is with give or take a few inches, depending on the final build out. So that meets the, the land use guidelines for height, but we did assign negative one points for the unbroken ridge line of greater than fifty feet. The ridge line will probably be closer to seventy or seventy-two feet as constructed. So we gave it negative one points under policy six R. As Shannon mentioned, the final site, it's, it's already a surface parking lot. So there will be minimal excavation there, but it will be regraded and paved to accommodate the footings for the steel foundation and all the docking systems that have to go in place. But we did not consider that to be a level of site disturbance, considering that it's already a paved lot. It didn't rise to the level of needing negative points to be awarded. With this plan, you touched on Mr. Lees that we will be losing the public parking area here because that will no longer be open to the part, the public, but these parking spaces will remain unused. Staff estimates an approximate eight hundred and eighty additional feet that could be used for snow storage in this area when it's not being used for parking. So we have no issues under policy thirteen. This temporary structure will close off access to the public, but there will still be the ability for pedestrians and cyclists to walk around the structure using the existing paved pathways that connect F lot and the Riverwalk to West Adams. So there's no issues with internal circulation. Regarding external circulation, we did consider that these large trucks will be moving through West Adams and making a backing movement here. Trucks already do that in this location to make deliveries fairly regularly. This will concentrate more in this location, but it'll remove trucks from other areas of town and prevent there being many pedestrian conflicts in other areas. So we're actually like, agree with the estimate that this will reduce pest pedestrian conflicts with backing movements from large vehicles. And we don't have any issues with the proposed circulation. I want to note that in addition to this parking area being lost, these parallel spots along West Adams will also be removed for public parking. And that's to accommodate the turning trucks. Who, under policy for eighteen, which is parking, again, these are thirty-six spaces that'll be removed. Currently, they're primarily for employee parking and the town has agreed to make accommodations for employee parking to be in other town-owned reservoirs around town. So like the F lot. And so there shouldn't be that much change to the employee parking that occurs here now. They may have to walk a little further from that slot. In the evening, this is a public parking reservoir. But again, the town has many public parking reservoirs nearby and we've added recently a thousand spaces in the gondola lots. So we're not anticipating any issues from this parking being removed. There's going to be minimal change to the open space of the lot. It's already a surface parking lot. This small hedgerow that currently has some mature aspen trees and shrubs will be lost to the installation of the structure, but that's only about two hundred square feet. And for the overall site, it's six and a half acres. So it's fairly negligible amount of lost lost open space area there. And regarding the landscaping, we will be losing those mature trees. It's part of the town's temporary structure policy that any negative impacts to landscaping will be mitigated once the structure is removed. So the town will hold on to that responsibility and, and be required to mitigate any production of landscaping that is because of this installation of the structure. Currently, the exterior of the site is fairly well screened from Park Avenue and mature trees along with the Riverwalk here. Staff believes that it's an adequate amount of screening as exists, and we're not proposing any additional landscaping with this project. Finally, I want to point out, under policy twenty-four, the social community housing impact mitigation, this is an institutional use for this project. And the code exempts institutional uses from being required to mitigate employee housing. If it were a private project, it would generate approximately five point seven new employees and require housing mitigation for two employees. Again, under policy twenty-four, community needs, we identified that this project does meet the council goals in recent, from twenty twenty-three. So there's the first goal it means is more boots and bikes and less cars. And then the second goal is leading environmental stewardship. And staff awarded the minimum positive three points for meeting those two goals. The project, again, it was directed from town council and is believed to reduce emissions, traffic, and be a, a way that to make pedestrians and bicyclists feel safer on town streets. Under policy twenty-six, the project was awarded the minimum positive four points because it is an identified capital improvement project in the current SIP plan. And then finally, the project does fail the town's temporary structures policy thirty-six A, which is an absolute policy. Under this policy, temporary structures are meant to be for an existing building that is undergoing repair or reconstruction and the temporary structure would replace that, the function of that necessary building while it's under construction. In this instance, this structure doesn't necessarily meet the spirit of that rule because it's not replacing an existing structure. It is a pilot program for a future structure perhaps, but it's not replacing an, an existing structure. And therefore it fails the temporary structure policy. But the town has, you know, committed to, like I said, improving the landscaping and doing any mitigation to return the site to its original condition, assuming this isn't the permanent location of, of a delivery program once the structure is removed. So just quickly summarize the point analysis for this project. As I stated, it fails policy thirty-six A, which is absolute. But because it is a town project, town projects do not have to meet chapter one of the development code. And then we've awarded negative seven points under fi- five R for architectural compatibility for the non-natural material use exceeding twenty-five percent of the facade. And sorry, that was negative six points under five R and negative one under policy six for the ridge line greater than fifty feet. And then finally, positive seven points total, positive three points for meeting those social community goals that are identified by the council and positive four points for being a capital improvement project identified in the town's SIP plan. All right. I'm happy to take any questions as that concludes my presentation. Again, Shannon's here to answer any questions. And we do have one attending online. I just want to reiterate that there will be time for public comment after commissioner and questions are answered. Thank you.
Commissioners, we have questions for Sarah Allen.
Thanks for the presentation, Sarah. How will the hours of operation for the tractor trailer delivery be enforced?
There'll be a permitting system in place with our contractor one oh six west.
Okay.
Operations, this is mirrored off of a program running in Vail currently.
Yeah.
And the Vail operations are generally five AM to ten AM.
Okay.
The idea is to pull that traffic off the road early.
Okay.
So we are assuming we'll have similar operational window here.
So if, if there's no way a tractor trailer can show up at seven o'clock when there's something starting at Riverwalk Center?
Correct. That, that would be very much out of the ordinary. I mean, we would accommodated it for highway closures, anything like that, but the trucks schedule their time at the dock with one oh six west. So it's in a very organized fashion.
Will the office have a bathroom and you're going to be installing plumbing for that?
We're going back and forth on that right now. I really don't want to run water and sewer to the trailer. I think the restrooms in the Riverwalk Center can accommodate, and we're looking at doing a temporary water tank inside.
Okay.
Just for some general cleanup if you know there's spillage or breakage from.
Shannon, can you make sure your microphone's on?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. And then this is a test. Is there a timeframe that this is bounded? This will end and everything will be restored?
We are right now under the guidelines of running the pilot for two years. If it's successful after two years, we would move to a permanent structure, either on this location or a new location if we can find one.
Okay, not to, that was just the sound. Okay. And then, uh, no, the reason I'm asking, because I know the town council's concerned about any sprung structures up on base of Peak Gate during the BGV project. But now we have a two-year sprung structure here. So it seems a little bit of a conflict, uh, uh, you know, a, a double standard.
Understood.
So, uh, that's just, I should save that as my comment. I'm sorry. That's it. No questions. Thank you.
Lauren?
I guess I wanted to know what other sites you considered for putting this temporary?
Sure. We looked at, I think it was five or six town on sites. Airport Road, the Schoonover site, we call it. Are you familiar with the Schoonover building? Adjacent to this property or other side of the river?
Okay.
We looked at the Public Works Yard, Airport Road, Schoonover, F Lot, and the Tiger Dredge. Tiger Dredge became the top choice for its proximity to all the businesses as well as the way the structure can be actually hidden from view a bit from Park Avenue with the elevation change between Park Avenue and the existing parking lot. So those were some of the reasons we chose that. Airport Road is just too far away. Same with Public Works. Schoonover is actually within the conservation district, so that quickly became a less favorable option.
Okay, thanks. And I guess I'm curious about the traffic circulation. If you wanted to go over that.
Image. I mean, as Sarah stated, a lot of trucks are doing this already. Most of the large delivery trucks do this movement from Main Street down Adams and exit through the parking lot onto Park Ave. The vehicle depicted here in the turning radius, turning radius is shown is a truck that's actually larger than anything we anticipate to see. That's a fifty-six foot sleeper cabin tractor trailer, which we don't think we would ever really dock here, but we wanted to make sure it would fit. So for now, the plan is for the largest trucks to come down Main Street, Adams, do the backing movement. Smaller trucks could come directly from Park Ave through the roundabout and come in the other direction. We are going to work, if this is successful, to see how the geometry could be improved off of the roundabout to have all of the truck traffic come in that way. Right now, we don't think the larger trucks can ingress with the way the radius is off of the roundabout, the four o'clock roundabout.
And then as far as the shuttles to the businesses, will those all be doing like, they'll be on the streets?
Oh, the electric car delivery?
How big are they? I don't.
Don't remember the length, do you?
They're larger than a golf cart, but smaller than like a single cab Toyota Tacoma pickup. They're.
They're, they're really small. They're street legal in theory. And they're going to do most of the deliveries via the Riverwalk and the alley system, but they will have to cross Main Street to get the businesses up towards Ridge. But the idea is that they use those alternative routes and aren't on the street as much as possible.
And they're gonna be okay going up the steep hills, you think?
Yeah, they're using, they're called a club car, I think is the branding. They use them in Vail right now. And they're actually the vehicle of the Swedish Postal Service. They have been really vetted. And I've, I've been worried about it since they brought it up, but they're very confident they can navigate our winter. And again, this is a pilot program, so we might find things that work great. We might find things that fail. We'll be able to adjust as we go.
So what stops it at two years? So that it doesn't continue on an eternity like this with this temporary building? That for you?
Probably the town council ultimately. I mean, I think that's, that's their stated goal. But just like anything, the town council has, with a town project, really has the authority to set their own parameters.
So it could be there forever?
I mean, yes.
Anything could happen, but I really doubt that. We, I mean.
Okay. This structure is probably not rated to be around.
Structures are.
Kind of like cottages that look like that that have been around forever. So.
Around long enough, then we'll have to preserve that canvas as historic fabric and.
Asking for extension to re, re-up the fabric. I don't know. I'm not, it's not a huge concern of mine, honestly. Before thinking of our current council and the need to redevelop this site in the future anyway, I think will really promote a final product within the timeframe of, you know, two, three, four years.
So did we, did we kind of merge together staff questions and applicant questions? Is that what looks at one?
Probably.
All right.
Sorry.
We'll consider that merged. Shannon, in the
Yes.
Infrastructure policy where you talk about temporary water supply or water source. It talks about cleaning the work area and cleaning the delivery vehicles. Are those, are you talking about the little electric trucks that will take the stuff around? Not gonna have a semi wash there?
No.
Pre about the river if we were washing semis.
No, it would, it would just be rinsing off the carts if needed. And I, we could support any of those things at Public Works if it became an issue.
Sarah, if you call up, if you go to one oh six west's website on their homepage, I have a picture of the cart, so we can see it.
I wanted to say they're like fourteen feet long, but that sounded really long.
Started interrupting. I'll let Sarah complete her scanning of the internet.
Well.
It's just one oh six west dot C O.
Thank you.
That's not the picture might answer a lot of questions.
Yeah.
That's the only picture on the site.
Other questions?
I went to the, to the site and took a look at it and those are really beautiful, nice, mature trees. Are they savable or are they too big to dig them out and transplant them?
They're probably too large to transplant and have them be viable in the new location.
And I think comment about the traffic flow, will they be able to go straight out and then through the roundabout and?
For egress, that's the plan.
Egress.
Absolutely.
It'll look like they would make that turn.
That's how they do it today with the larger trucks. All the eighteen-wheelers come down Adams after they deliver to those adjacent businesses.
We got one letter before we got here today that seemed to imply that there was a second site that they preferred. And that their street didn't make any sense to me.
I, I wasn't sure. I did speak with that commenter on the phone and I did not know what secondary location they preferred. And she wrote Ridgeway in the comments. I, I don't know. I know that she is, resides across Park Avenue in those condos.
I didn't think that was a Ridgeway. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
You?
Ethan?
The other commissioners have already answered my questions or asked them.
Good.
So thank you, Sarah. Interesting project, lots of questions, but how will this be communicated to the public? Will there be some outreach or some interpretation or some public relations? public relations that speaks to the, the need for the project and how the project would work? And the benefit for the project?
We did do, um, extensive public notice of this hearing and next week's hearing with the town council. Um, I'm hoping that at the town council hearing, um, that it's conveyed like the public benefit um, that outrides, you know, the need for enforcing the development code in this situation. Um, and I think, um, because we've discussed how it does meet two of the council goals that have been set, um, reducing emission by reducing emissions downtown, um, making it safer for pedestrians and cyclists to be on those side streets. Um, you'd rather encounter a small electric car rather than a large delivery vehicle if you're a ped um, in those locations. Um, uh, I think that the town council has had many work sessions leading up to this, um, which are open to the public describing why they want this pilot program. Um, so I'm hoping that that has met the threshold for the necessary outreach to show that it is a, a public benefit project. Um, it's not just something that was, um, thought up wi- without, uh, consideration of the, the need for the project and weighing that against, um, how it looks and potentially some of the impacts on parking and, uh, noise in this location.
Okay. Would they consider an interpretive panel somewhere around the facility so that when it's up and running, passersby might understand the need and merit?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Shannon. Um, so this is going to be deliveries for restaurants and I assume bars. Um, have, uh, these businesses already signed up for this service or how is that gonna work?
Um, uh, the restaurant community is very excited about this project. We have met with the Restaurant Association back in January, probably, and had a, a great meeting there, answered a lot of questions. The way the service works is that the vendors actually contract with the one oh six West, so it's not the restaurants that have the relationship, but the food and beverage companies have the relationship.
Services.
So everybody getting a delivery from Breakthrough Beverage. But Breakthrough Beverage will just come to the dock and then one oh six will go to any restaurant that had an order on that truck. And they actually bring the product into the restaurant and put it away however that restaurant owner desires. So there's a high level of service to the restaurants from this new venture as well.
So, so then people are, are signed on?
They're very excited.
Okay, and, and the delivery services are, um, equally?
There's a few of them out there who express some concerns. They have a little bit of concern with the, you know, chain of custody of the products.
Yeah.
But this is a voluntary program. So only vendors who are excited and want to be a part of it are joining.
Mm-hmm.
It's not mandatory by.
I see, so we're, we still may have some trucks driving around town.
Oh, we absolutely will. We're going to look for six to ten vendors the first year to join the program. Um,
Okay.
With the hope to expand that year over year.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was gonna ask you if there was a threshold for making this viable.
Oh, as far as return on investment?
Yeah, I mean, make it a worthwhile project.
I mean, the return is the, the safety factor that Sarah keeps bringing up. This project falls under our bigger project, the Blue River Pathways Project. You know, the top priority there is improving safety in the Riverwalk and the alleys. Um, from a cost perspective, it doesn't really pan out. That's why, that's a public project, so.
Yeah, no.
But we think we'll make an impact even with those six vendors. You know, you get those six trucks, they come seven days a week. And they're going to seventy businesses are in the core area that we're gonna serve with the pilot.
Mm-hmm.
So that truck, instead of going to seventy different businesses, is making one stop now. So it, it's very efficient for the vendors as well. I think I didn't answer that question. Uh, so they save a ton of time.
Sure.
On their truck time, as well as, I guess, workers' comp claims went down with the bail program because those delivery drivers get injured often.
Uh.
Especially some of our older businesses that have stairways that you have to access to get the product down and all that sort of thing, so. I think there's a lot of advantages to the vendors.
Okay. Um, so you indicated, uh, in bail, I guess, uh, it, these deliveries occur between five AM and ten AM.
Mm-hmm.
So there's gonna be a long period of time after that during the day when this area is not gonna be used. Is there any way that parking can be accommodated, um, outside of that delivery period?
I don't think public parking would be a great mix, although we wanna get all of our trucks in and out by ten AM. There will be times when some of them are running later.
I was thinking like some of the employee parking.
Um, by staff's analysis, there really would only be like five spaces that you could even access.
Uh-huh.
Um, once the structure is up and running and, um, you know, because you couldn't block the docks from trucks if, if one did show up. Um, so having, uh, it closed primarily to public access is the best option.
And we're going to replace all those employee permanent spots with employee permanent spots in F Lot.
Right, right. But, you know, F Lot is pretty popular too, so it's a trade-off.
It, it absolutely is, you know, and some of our prime real estate along this corridor is taken up by parking. And the project with our public survey, so we, for the Riverwalk project, we did a public survey and number one and two and three were safety, bike circulation and pedestrian circulation.
Hmm.
There were no comments about parking, honestly, interesting, from the public that participated.
I mean, the other thing to, to keep in mind too is, is within, since we completed the South Gondola lot, we did increase the amount of parking on the Park Avenue, uh, quarter by hundreds of spaces, so if you look at the amount of parking, let's say over that mile stretch of Park Avenue, which is almost entirely parking on the, on the east side of Park Avenue. You know, for losing thirty-four here, we did gain several hundred with that, that expansion.
Assuming that that goes forward.
Four hundred and seven, yeah.
Right. Um, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, back to the cost, we, we've spoken and Sarah spoke to the fact that this is a capital improvements program.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, what, what is the cost of the ship?
Sure, um, the year one pilot cost between the structure as well as the operational expense is, is at two point one million dollars currently.
And?
With nearly half of that being the investment in the temporary structure and the dock. With nearly half of that being the investment in the temporary structure and docking platforms.
And, and which party is going to put up that two point one million? Is the town putting that up?
Absolutely, it's all town expenditure through the CIP.
And the cost, once that two point one million dollar expenditure is done, the cost of operations is going to be entirely um, supported by the vendors and the restaurants? How does that, how does that work?
No, it'll be operational cost to the town moving forward.
Town.
I'm sorry to say that part.
Those costs will accrue to the town?
They will, and we will be assessing a docking fee. Um, it'll be a nominal amount in the first year and it'll increase. But it will be on the upwards of like fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year versus a million dollars.
I'm sorry, I'm having a really hard time hearing you as you're speaking, so it's awfully.
Most of the expense will be from the town. We will have a docking fee assessed that will get about sixty thousand dollars a year in revenue versus the million dollars in operating expenses. So this isn't a project to make money, it's a project to prove safety.
The big bill. Um, you mentioned that the, uh, vendors are going to be supporting some portion of the cost. Um, are the restaurants supporting any portion of the cost? How does that work?
Not at this time, no. There's no ask from the restaurants.
And the vendors?
Will be paying the docking fee. We'll pay the docking fee.
Through the dock fee. That's, that's how they'll support it through the dock fee.
The only fee assessed for revenue will be the docking fee.
Which is going, a- as a percentage of the operating cost each year, how much?
Five percent.
Five percent?
Established yet. We have not brought the docking fee structure to the town council.
Okay. So, these vendors are gonna pay five percent and the town's gonna pay ninety-five percent?
That has not been determined, but we're estimating about that much.
That's what you're estimating the impact of it. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, we, we can, uh, I mean, this is good background information, but just to kind of frame the, the hearing, the decision that you guys or recommendation would be based on the development code. Well, this is, I mean, interesting and you, Shan's obviously here to provide that detail.
Well, Chris, I think it's important that.
In, in terms of yours, in terms of your role is to make a recommendation based on the development code.
I understand that, uh, but this is a public hearing. I think it's important that these questions of cost versus benefit be heard by the commissioners as well as the public, although that's outside of our scope of what we're approving tonight. I agree with you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to establish what the criteria is for the.
Yeah, I think we all know that. But I think my questions are appropriate to the question that, that's on the table. Um, you mentioned the other sites that were evaluated?
Yes.
Um, there, there must have been some discussion or is there ongoing discussion about if this is successful, where's the permanent site gonna be? Or is this gonna become the permanent site?
It's unknown at this time.
Can you tell me about discussions about that?
We haven't had discussions about the permanent. We're starting with the pilot program.
I think that's kind of interesting that we're going to jump into a temporary, uh, program and have no idea of what we're going to do once we determine whether or not this is successful. I think that's very interesting. You mentioned, Shannon, uh, that there would likely be redevelopment of this particular site sometime in the future. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, which will help us to understand the impact of what we're potentially approving for this site tonight?
Sure, um, the Riverwalk Center redevelopment concept is part of the CIP and is an ongoing project. That's what I was referring to.
So that would be part of what, what's being done on the whole Riverwalk site?
It could be, since it's adjacent.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how the parking lot would be redeveloped and how that would potentially impact or not impact the decision that's being made tonight.
I don't think it's my place here to specu- speculate on future redevelopment of the town property in relation to this project.
Okay, you mentioned it, that's why I asked for clarification. Um, the vendors is, the vendors that are gonna, i- is alcohol delivery going to be included in this process or are they going to retain their own deliveries for alcohol to the restaurants?
No, th- this will take both food and beverage, including alcohol.
Okay. Okay. That's, uh, that's all I had. Um,
Um, my question is, why do we have so many docks if we're only doing like five or six restaurants?
We're doing five, six vendors, which will serve seventy restaurants within the um, framework of the pilot program.
Each vendor will have their own dock.
Not necessarily, no.
The different docks are to accommodate the size of the delivery vehicle?
Correct.
Okay, I guess I was just thinking that's a lot of docks that maybe it could be scaled down in size, just a thought.
So six is what we'll be starting with for the vendor and that will scale up to upwards of thirty, once the program is running in full.
Thirty vendors, not thirty docks, okay.
Thirty vendors. So six is the minimum we're starting with to get this, get our feet wet and then the idea would be to take on every vendor that wants to participate.
Okay.
Sure, uh, just one more operational question, Shannon. So, um, the deliveries to the dock will be limited to six to ten AM or early morning. But the electric vehicles could be running throughout the day?
Correct.
To get the product, okay.
And there's a lot of cross operations, if you wanna know. You know, they drop off the food in the morning, then they'll come back and pick up, pick up soiled linens, bring those back. So they'll be doing back and forth things for quite some time. And we are also looking to grow this pilot program to include trash recycling and compost
Mm-hmm.
options in year two. So those cars could. Hmm?
Yeah.
No, 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 no. All concentrated in the Riverwalk. So there could be other opportunities for this site to be taking over some of those items as well, but those are still under development and have not been approved by the town council.
Is that, can that canvas keep bears out now?
Yes.
I'm gonna start with you, Susan.
Uh, I have no further comment.
Public, uh, they would open up the public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Can you hear him?
Do we have anybody out there?
Uh, someone with their hand raised, can you repeat the, um, um, how to unmute?
Star nine and star six.
We do have, um, let's see. I'm allowing the online commenters to speak if you, if, if you would like to comment now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, it's Christina Stanley and it's Simiron, um, three oh eight, uh, three oh five South Park Avenue. Um, I did miss the start, so this may have already been addressed, but my question is, has there been, um, uh, an impact on the traffic? Uh, has there been a statement made as to the impact on the traffic flow along Park Avenue? Because it is obviously a very busy thoroughfare. Um, yeah, that's my question.
Thank you for your question, much appreciated. We have not done a traffic impact study for this project. However, the amount that we are increasing traffic on Park Avenue, uh, would be negligible and would not meet the threshold for addressing any changes to the access permit with C dot.
How many, um, trucks do envisage coming in each morning? Do you have any figure?
For the start of the program, we are thinking between six and ten trucks daily only. And that will scale up at, depending on the success and growth of the project.
And I suspect the earlier they come, the better it will be. I mean, obviously things start to get busy with, um, guests leaving town and coming into town.
Absolutely. The target for the delivery trucks would be between five AM and ten AM to have our most intense deliveries happening well before there's any traffic there on Park Ave.
And then my other question pertains to, obviously you did a great job on the parking structure and I realize this is a temporary structure. Uh, will it be aesthetically pleasing? I realize it is temporary, but in keeping with um, the general town appearance as opposed to green and white and yellow bright colors? What are your thoughts on that?
Uh, so the structure will not be a bright color. It's going to be a brown canvas. Um, so as appealing as brown canvas can be, we did, uh, assess, um, the maximum number of negative points for the project regarding the aesthetics. Um, and so we recognize that in this case, the public benefit does outweigh the, the, um, possible negative impacts of the structure's appearance. Um.
Brown canvas. I think of canvas as a fabric. Is, is that what it is? Like a, a tent?
Essentially, yes, it's a, a very large, um, sprung structure with a stretched fabric canvas ti- uh, on top. The canvas is like, um, a heavy, probably polyurethane material, so it's resistant to weather and um, damage from debris or anything like that.
Yeah. I mean, I think personally, I think that's important given. Yeah, I mean, I think personally, I think that's important given how close it is to the center of town. So I guess brown is good.
Thanks Christina for your comments.
Sarah, do we have anybody else out there?
There's one more. If anybody else would like to speak, please raise your hand. No more. Do you have any comments in the room?
Yeah, okay, there's no further comment from the public out there. We'll go ahead and close uh that portion of it. And uh we'll move on to commissioner comments.
We probably should just acknowledge that the planning commission did receive some comments that were sent to staff earlier. I don't know if you wanna.
Uh, yes, the, there were several uh comments emailed to staff. One of those was included in your packet. And then um others were received after the packet publishing de- time. And you were given those comments um this afternoon on your desk.
And move on to commissioner comments, this Susan.
I have no further comment.
Michael.
Um, I, I do think that. It's a curious project. Um, Vail has a pedestrian area that seems to lend itself uh quite well to this. Um, I encourage the town to uh interpret it and inform the, the public and I. I respect that Sarah noted that they had had some work sessions, but I still think there needs to be some further outreach. And um speak to the benefits, uh, connect this to the Riverwalk project and um improving the. Walkability and uh cycling um safety on the, on the Riverwalk walk project. But um I do support the project and I appreciate Shannon and Sarah's good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Shannon. Uh, I too support this project. I, I um. It being a pro- a pilot project, I think we need to emphasize that. We're gonna see what this is gonna turn out to be in the next couple of years. Might all find that it's not doing what we wanted to do, uh, what the council wants to do. But uh in the meantime, I uh, I, I support his project and um. I do wanna reiterate what Chris had said, that, that our role here as commissioners is to comment and to, to uh look at the policy, not. Decide whether this project is gonna happen or not. That's for the town council and anybody listening should understand that. That's not our role here. Um, other than that, thank you.
I support the project. I think that it has many collateral benefits to the town. Anybody who goes downtown in the morning hours and observes the. Diesel semis idling in alleys with black smoke coming out the smoke stacks. Uh, and moving about the town can understand the benefits of cleaner air. And less risks to people on foot and on bicycles. So I think it's a, it's got a lot of potential. We'll have to see if it works. Members of the public who are expressing concern about this, I think, should bear in mind. That I don't think this is going to be a permanent commercial operation in that parking lot location. Uh, but that's up to the council to decide what's gonna happen with that. Uh, for the time being, it'll be something that we lose a few parking spaces over. Uh, which we've already replaced with our own parking facility. I think that the uh planning department has taken into consideration all of the. Standards that would apply to this and, and tax the town with as many negative points as they could. Uh, fortunately offset by the public benefit, so I think it's a fair analysis. Thank you.
I think this is a really great project and I love that we're going to do this. Um, like. Like Steve mentioned, I do have concerns about the location of it and I hope that that will not be the permanent location. I think the. The, the ideal would be to have it, you know, the trucks unload outside of town and then the smaller vehicles bring them into town. So this is right in the heart of our beautiful downtown, so um, yeah, fully support it.
Yes, thank you. Um, Chris, I just have a question. Is this um? Uh, is it already gone through, does this go through the uh first and second uh readings in town council or has it already been approved or?
No, this will go through a, a town project hearing with the town council.
Okay.
So tonight we're looking for, I mean, it seems like now the majority is recommending. Improvement, the, but that's where there's a slight variation from your normal where you actually approve it and then the.
It goes, okay, so there will be council, we'll have public sessions.
And it will be next week.
Yeah.
That's how our town project process works. It's kind of back to back.
Alright, so just to concur and just extend further what fellow commissioners have said, I would. Encourage our role as we are judges, we, we just, we make sure that projects meet the town development code. Uh, and I would encourage anyone in the public who has commented on this and may be listening in that they should. Um, uh, raise their concerns with town council before those uh they give their final approval. That this is not the forum for us uh to address your concerns. Uh, outside of anything that would affect the development code of, of the town. Um, I am concerned, I would advise town council that they are setting a precedent using of approving a sprung structure. Considering that they have raised concerns about sprung, sprung structures, temporary sprung structures. Had been, been used in the past, um particularly up at the uh P K and such, those that lingered and those that may be coming up soon. Um, I do support this overall. Uh, last week, there was a large truck in the middle of Ridge Street at three thirty. Right when the trails were emptying out and he decided that's where he was gonna take his chains off before heading further down I seventy. Um, so. Um, I, I do see how these large trucks are, can be quite uh, uh, a nuisance. Um, I would hope that part of the study would also see. The logistically, how it could work that this uh dock could be located when permanent and perhaps at a different location than right. In the center of our town, but that's a trade off between the small trucks and the big trucks. And uh I also concur with Commissioner Geller that the town should promote this more and promote the benefits of this. Um, so I think that would be uh particularly in relation to how they want to develop that whole area.
Thank you. I think this is a really interesting project and I see all the benefits of this, I think, um, and I hope that this. Works out uh very successfully. I, I do have concerns, um, and, and my biggest concern is that uh. We're gonna stick this structure in the middle of downtown. And the town is telling us that this is going to be a temporary structure, but yet they can't tell us where. They're considering permanent structure if this is successful, which makes me very. Concerned that that, this will become the permanent structure. And this building will be there for a longer period of time than what we're being led to believe. So um in, in spite of that, I do, do support the project.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. That the planning commission recommend to the town council. Approval of the Tiger Dredge Temporary Delivery Plot Pilot Program Sprung Structure. Number PL twenty twenty four dash zero zero forty five, located at one fifty West Adams Avenue. Upon the attached point analysis findings and conditions with a passing score of zero points.
We have a second. Susan's seconds. Can we get a vote, Chris?
Certainly. Mister Lees.
Yes.
This, uh, Miss Gort.
Yes.
Mister Gerard.
Yes.
Mister Fractor.
Yes.
Mister Geller.
Yes.
Miss Proper.
Yes.
Mister Gara.
Yes.
He's not twenty years.
Okay, the motion has uh passed. Chris, um, do you have uh anything else other than the town um council summary?
Just have the town council summary, so.
Just the council summary left. Um, thank you, Shannon. Appreciate you being here. And actually, while you're here, if you want, um. Because we haven't had the planning commission see the Blue River Pathways project yet. I don't know if.